Hi, this is Lisa Hartman.
Good evening. The executive session in Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of October 9th was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellus Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of Compliance said a fourth date time and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act that both sides taking. Meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. The Stanford of Blackstreet followed by a mother's side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. I'm going to break apart from the normal order of the agenda tonight. We have a presentation by Helena Kim.
Oh, this is the barriers up.
Hello, my name is Helena Kim. I'm a current senior at Wayne Hills High School. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today a little bit about my experience of the Tech Girls program this summer. So before I got into anything, I wanted to explain what Tech Girls is. Tech Girls is an initiative of the U.S. Department's State Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs. This summer, they brought over 110 girls from over 37 countries for over a three-week program for STEM and Leadership Exchange. And it was designed to inspire and connect young women passionate about STEM and community impact together. The program was fully funded by the Department of State and included flights, housing, stipends for projects, food, meals, and also health insurance if needed. So my experience, personally, I was selected as one out of 13 U.S. finalists. I was representing New Jersey, and I learned how to code music using creative technology tools, and I also completed leadership workshops focused on collaboration and empowerment and also implementing the required Capstone project at the end of the program to benefit our communities when we went back home. I also traveled to Cincinnati, Ohio for a two-day job shadow experience at Starrag USA located in Hebron, Kentucky, to explore real-world tech applications in the actual career setting, where we use applications of material science and computer-aided design and other kinds of coding and such to make different kinds of materials. We also connected with girls from around the world through different group projects and cultural exchange activities. So we did a lot of events throughout the entire program, but I thought it would be nice to show a lot of different pictures instead to really capture how it was like. So towards the end of the program, we actually got to visit the Department of State, which was really nice. This is a picture of me and the other U.S. finalists, and this is us posing in front of the auditorium where we listen to a bunch of other Tech Girls speak about their experience along with the program coordinator and the Legacy International lead. This is me in front of the Bumo tech machine, which is the specific milling machine that I used at Starrag, which I used at my job shadow experience. And this was the lovely TV that I walked into, which made us feel so welcome. At Cincinnati, this is actually my host family who took me in for two days. And next to me is Aya, my host sister from Tunisia. And on the bottom left is actually our first day at Cincinnati. I traveled with someone from Washington, Sophia, and girls from the Middle East. So here are a couple more photos. So we were actually at Virginia Tech for the teaching part of the program, and this is the day of the community barbecue, where we were encouraged to wear clothing from our cultural background. So because I'm Korean, I wore a hanbok, and I got to learn about different countries such as Albania and different kinds of countries all over the world, which was so amazing. This is an internal view of the machine I was working on. It's a high-precision milling tool, and I was actually going inside the machine to champer a 3D-printed jaw to hold the necklace that I was making. I got some splinters in the layer, unfortunately, but this is a really interesting look into how you can see, and if you look closely, you can kind of see the necklace that I was trying to make over there. On the bottom left is my friend Malika from Cambodia and Sandra from Indonesia. I think on the second-to-last day, we did a really cool DC trip, which was great because I didn't have a DC trip my eighth-grade year because of COVID. So I got to have it with a bunch of girls from all over the world, and we visited the White House, the Lincoln Memorial, and also the MLK statue. This is us on the last day of the Tech Girls program at the Marriott at Georgetown, which was super cool. We all got to do interesting speeches for our RAs just to like express our gratitude, which was really fun. And public speaking was a really big part of the program, so I wanted to kind of highlight that there. I'm there speaking at there, and the podium, which was super cool. So I kind of wanted to end this by talking about pods and takeaways. So we were actually divided into four pods based on our different interests. So I was actually in the rhythm pod, and it was algorithm, music making, and beyond. So I used the JavaScript coding language to actually make super cool beats and tracks. And it was really interesting for me as a pianist because I got to incorporate my STEM background in a different way. But three other pods was Rivers, and they got to explore rivers and landscapes through using physics and chemistry and other kinds of things through the creek next to Virginia Tech, actually. The ME pod was more biochemistry, and they focused on molecular modeling and informatics. And ASAM was more of the robotics type. They automated super cool systems using microprocessors and machines, kind of like the Raspberry Pi, if anyone's aware of that. But all in all, Tech Girls taught me that STEM can bridge cultures and create opportunities and spark global change, and I actually am so excited to announce that my Capstone project will be in accordance with my nonprofit, Zooming Through Music. And I'm actually planning to incorporate this as well with the Bergen County and the Morris County, and our goal is to kind of spread technology and teach it to anybody regardless of gender or age or any kind of disabilities. So Sofar and Bergen, our member Jay has been working around his church and actually teaching how to use technology and phones to the elderly, which has been really great. The sign-ups have been going great, which is really fun. But I would like to personally like to teach how to code and make websites to people in a special education program or people with disabilities because I feel like technology is so important, especially today, and it is a really useful tool to learn and can be really fun. Thank you so much for listening to me today, and I hope you have a great rest of your day.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah.
So you said you go to Wayne Hills, correct?
Yeah.
What is anything that in your experience in Wayne Hills or your developmental schools that prior to Wayne Hills that helped you really want to pursue a work in STEM?
Yeah, I mean, I have been blessed with really great teachers. I mean, two teachers that really come to mind right now is my physics teacher, Ms. Sugar, and my AP Biology teacher, Dr. Dafina, and they were really supportive with me in applying to this program and such like that and a bunch of other programs that I was interested in. And also currently, my computer science teacher, Ms. Saransky, she was my teacher for Honor Java last year and this year for APCSA. And she is just like so great at teaching Java in such a great way. Java is like the worst language in my opinion, but she makes it really interesting. And so I was just interested in STEM because of like the environment that I was kind of curated in. I feel like, you know, there's a bunch of great teachers at Wayne Hills, and I also went to Anthony Wayne, and I had a bunch of great teachers there who kind of almost pushed me into this area where I felt comfortable to kind of explore myself in this area.
Wonderful. I'm sure you have great parental support, too.
Yeah, my parents are great, too.
How did you learn about this program in order to apply for this program?
So I actually came across their Instagram. They have such an interesting Instagram page, and it's really interesting. They feature like a bunch of young girls and the types of change that they're doing, and they're from all over the world. They do videos. And so I also learned about this through just like simple Google searches because I was just looking for a nice like community exchange program or a cultural exchange program because I wanted to learn more. I'm actually like the president of my multi-win club this year, so it was so interesting to actually meet the countries that I'm like delegations for as well. So it was a really great way to like combine those two interests of mine.
And what are your plans after high school?
Um, I plan to major in geophysics or physics with a minor in music because I'm a piano player, so I'm really excited for that. So I'm in the midst of college applications.
Yeah, oh, boy.
What's maybe your nonprofit again?
Uh, Zooming Through Music.
I'd love to put you in touch with Ms. Dana Serre, who heads up our specialized program, so maybe working with them or our CPAG could take advantage of your Zooming Through Music and allowing you to even show the coding aspect of everything you wanted to share with our exceptional student population. Is that good?
Yes, thank you so much.
And I want to, I wasn't sure. Did you say you're the only student from New Jersey that was selected?
Yes.
And you go to Wayne Schools?
Yes.
Thank you, Elena. Thank you so much. Well, that's a great, tough to follow that. And for something even as invigorating, I must share with you that pursuant to state law NJ S.A. 18A 17-46, twice a year, all incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse offenses and harassment, intimidation, bullying must be reported to boards, local boards of education, and those in the community. The report I'm going to prepare you tonight is reporting period two, which was last January 2000, uh, January 2025 until June 30th, 2025. Tonight, I'm reporting on the following incidents that took place in the report period of January 1st, 2025, January, uh, June 30th, 2025, as reported to the New Jersey Department of Education through their safety data system. It also requires each school district to report more and more information as the data gets pursuant. For example, all HIB investigations, both alleged and confirmed, must now be reported. In addition, all removals for anything somewhat suspension or disciplinary action must be reported through both general education and special education as well. Our schools continue to maintain excellent records of investigation, documenting and reporting, and handling all incidents in timely manner. For this time period, there were 13 incidents of violence, four incidents of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, 10 incidents of substance abuse, and 172 general code of conduct incidents for removal. The district reported 30 confirmed HIBs out of a total of 96 investigated. All alleged HIB cases were for that second reporting part of the school year. The 30 confirmed HIB cases involve cases that were selected based upon race, ancestry, one for religion, four of gender, six of orientation, three of power imbalance, five for disability, three for a distinguishing perceived characteristic of students. Cases were investigated by the anti-bullying specialist with guidance and support of other principals and the district anti-bullying coordinator. Consensus and remediation efforts for the offending students, including individual counseling, student and/or parent conferences, and discipline in accordance with the district code of conduct. Remedial measures for targeted students included counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay-away agreements, teacher, teaching aid and monitors for the course of the day, adult-student pairings, and other measures. In addition, each school has instituted programming, including a district-wide No Place For Hate Intended Initiative to intend reducing in bullying and improve school climate. Secondly, as part of my report that I must provide, is the HIB grades report. All New Jersey schools are required to complete an annual self-assessment to determine compliance with anti-bullying rights. School scores must be presented annually to the public at the meeting annually prior to October 31st. Each school must evaluate performance of eight core areas or elements, which include the following: HIB programs, approaches or initiatives, training on the Board of Education, approved HIB policies, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum instruction on HIB and related information and skills, introducing HIB personnel, school-level HIB level reporting, HIB investigation procedures, and general HIB reporting. Each of the indicators above, our characteristics, are awarded no points for not meeting the criteria. One point for partial compliance, two points for meets expectations, and three points for exceeding expectations. The total possible score for with three awarded level categories is a total of 78. This year, our district averaged a report of 75.9, which indicates our schools have been able to maintain a high level of student support when significantly, while significantly reducing the number of HIB complaints in the 2425 school year. Over the two-year period, Wayne Township Public Schools has reduced the number of bullying complaints by nearly 49%. This is, and thanks to the exceptional work of our professional school counselors, who also serves as anti-bullying specialists, and our caring administrators who take a very proactive approach to supporting our students and take daily actions to stop bullying in schools. Specific school scores are as follows: APT, JFK, Lafayette, Maryland Carter, and Wayne Valley all scored a 77. Anthony Wayne Middle School, Jordan Washington Middle School, James Fallon, Pat Conack, Ryerson all reported a 76. Mines Lake, Thineus Day, Wayne Hills reported 75. Finally, Preakness Early Childhood Centers scored themselves with 73 out of 78. It is notable that Preakness did not have any HIB reports in the 2425 school year, impacting the maximum available for the school. A copy of each school's preliminary rubric submission was attached in the agenda and posted for public view. It is important to note that the slight variation in reported scores between our schools still exceeds the standard definition in all categories. I want to thank all of our teachers, support staff, counselors, child study team members, and administrators who worked tirelessly, tirelessly to combat bullying proactively and to ensure our schools are safe and go upcoming in positive, positive environments for all of our students. That includes this portion of the superintendent's report. We do also have on my report a wonderful presentation in the NJSLA from Dr. Laura Katmark, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction.
Good evening, everybody. I think this presentation is not quite as exciting as the F1, but we'll all make it through together. The Department of Education requires school districts to report on the NJSLA, so these, this data is from May of 2025. The scores were recently published and sent out home, so there's going to be a lot of what appears to look repetitive. I'm going to try to speak through it and highlight some of our accomplishments here. There are quite a few. So we're going to start right with the NJSLAs for Language Arts. So NJSLA is the New Jersey Student Learning, it's learning assessment, it's given in Language Arts, Math, and Science to students. Language Arts is given to students in grades three through nine. It's broken, data's broken out into five categories: Level one, not meeting; standards, partially meeting for level two; approaching; standards for level three; meeting expectations for level four; and exceeding expectations for level five. So what this slide is essentially showing about is the percentage of proficiency across the three years, 22, 2023, 2024, 2025. And then at the end, what we are highlighting here is the percent proficient for students that are meeting and exceeding expectations, and what we're showing is that in grades four through eight, we've seen this high level of increase, which is something we're looking for, right? We're always looking for growth for students meeting and exceeding expectations, and that's what we're highlighting here for Language Arts. Same exact slide here for math. There is a little bit of a change here because in math, we don't give the assessments by grades at the high school. We give the assessment by course. So you see Algebra I, Algebra I for middle school and high school, and then Geometry broken out. We have some middle school students who take Algebra I, and we want to indicate those scores a little differently, so there's two separate cohorts of students, Algebra I in middle school, Algebra I in high school. And then what we're showcasing is the same highlights there where students have made growth moving from levels four to five. The specific noteworthy one is really in grades five, which shows that we have made quite a considerable jump in students moving into the exceeding expectation category this year. Science is a little different. This is the same slide, but we only give the science test in grades five, eight, and 11, and there are only four categories for proficiency for science. So we're showing growth in students moving from levels three to four, still meeting to exceeding in all three grades, and this is a pretty noteworthy accomplishment. The science test is not easy, and it is, there's not a whole lot of data that comes back on this test that helps inform our teaching practices. So it's notable for our teachers and our students that we've made gains in that area. It's tough for districts to do that. Okay, so shifting gears a little bit, one of the things we're required to report is how students are changing across levels because, again, we're looking for growth. Maybe not necessarily mastering all areas, but just growth as we're moving across. So this slide is showing the changes in levels of one, two, and three, four, and five between, as compared to the state, Wayne Township scores opposed to the state. So we're highlighting grade five for some considerable gains, and I wanted to bring up grade nine for a specific reason. Last year, the NJSLA ELA for grade nine specifically across the state saw huge gains, and when that happens, the state sometimes calibrates their assessments. They had changed the scoring last year, and as a result, they saw collectively across the state, huge increases in all the districts. So we don't have this information yet, but it's potential that there was a change in the scoring again this year, which indicates why the grades might have this, the decrease in the proficiency points that we received, but that's true for the state as well. I just wanted to highlight that we may not be comparing apples in this case. We might have some different scoring mechanisms. Math, same, same thing, comparing Wayne to the state in terms of number of students moving across the levels. Again, highlighting grade five, which we spoke about earlier. And the same for science. The state is a pretty good metric for us. Generally, the state is average across all the districts, so when you're, when you're outperforming the state, it's usually a positive metrics for, for the school districts. This is a required slide for a number of students that have taken the test, just noting that across all grades, in this year, we tested 63 more students than we did last year. Obviously, there could be a variety of factors, including an increased enrollment. In math, the same thing. We tested a larger number of middle school students. So this goes back to what I was speaking about before. We're seeing more kids taking Algebra I at our middle school level, which, again, changes the cohort of students from high school, and it's, and it's some, and can account for differences in scoring. You're not comparing the same cohorts of kids in each, in each area. Science, remember, we actually tested less students this year, which, again, science testing happens at different times. It's not given on the same, at the same time as ELA and math, and there's different grade levels, so. Okay, so in this, we're comparing Wayne to the state, and what you're generally looking for across proficiency levels is that you're seeing, that you want the district to be lower than the state average of, because that in levels one, two, and three, because that indicates that we have less students performing at the, at those not meeting expectations or approaching expectations levels, and you want it, so in this slide, the fact that I'm not putting green circles around anything here is actually a good thing, right? That means that our numbers of students performing at these levels are lower than the state level. In level, as you're getting into level four, and there, we're collectively higher than the state, I just didn't put a lot of green circles there, I'm just highlighting all grades. So across all of our grades, we have a higher percentage of students meeting expectations than the state by a considerable percentage. So same thing for grades, for, for level five. So again, same kind of situation for math. We want to have our numbers be lower than the state on these levels so that we have less kids performing here, so this is all good collectively. We have less students in these levels than, than the state average. Once you get into level four, again, we have a higher percentage of kids meeting expectations than the state average by a considerable amount. It's highlighting geometry there because that's a pretty big, a pretty big percentage difference that if the state is averaging 11% in level five and we're meeting almost 20, that's, that's something to celebrate. And finally, for science, same thing, lower, in some cases, higher, depending on, on how you're looking at it, but generally lower than, than the state. More students in the proficient range. Okay, so now we're moving one of our requirements for the, for the Department of Ed is to report out on subgroup. So what you just saw was primarily was all students lumped together. Now we're going to break out by a couple of different subgroup categories. So here you see demographic subgroups, Asian, Black, Hispanic, and white. And what is noteworthy here is that all of our subgroups are, are highest meeting and exceeding expectations, which is in line with the previous slides you saw, but now even by subgroups is, is showing that. Same for math, a little bit lower in the exceeding expectations across our subgroups, but generally meeting. And then for science, we're showing subgroups that are written down in that second column, and I'm just highlighting because there's a lot to celebrate here in terms of increases from 2023, 24 into 25 across all of our subgroups, just students making the lower numbers of students in level one, higher number of students in level three and four. So this is for a new subgroup category. This is for female and male, so we're seeing, again, meeting and exceeding expectations across both subgroups for both Language Arts, less, a little bit lower for math, similar to what we have for Language Arts, but a little bit lower exceeding expectations for math, but still. And then for science, same thing, lower student, lower, lowering our percentage of females in the level one category and raising in level three. Okay, so now this subgroup is our final kind of breakout that we have to do, and so this shows our multilingual learners, free energy students on free energy sponge and students with IEPs and 504s, along with Gen Ed students, just highlighting in some areas where our ML students are multilingual learners and our special ed students have grown lower numbers in our level one, higher numbers in our level three, showing that students are growing and even, and meeting expectations. This is pretty significant. As you know, math is always an area where we can struggle, but we're seeing like, again, lower numbers of students in the level one category and considerably higher numbers for meeting and exceeding. Same for science. Okay, so what does all of that mean, and what are we doing with, with that data? So some of the intervention strategies that we've been looking at for this year, the district has recently, this year adopted a new math resource for grades K through 12. So we upgraded our resource for all of our elementary, middle, and our high school math classes, Algebra and Geometry, and we're using a resource, the same resource that has been used in the past, but the most current edition. So that, that aligns better to what current math standards look like. It will provide students with greater opportunities to, to have practice in some of those, those concepts. There's been supplemental lessons that were created for science at the middle school to try to align more directly with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, along with common assessments for science at the high school. Our I-ready assessment, which is given in elementary school for literacy, now includes literacy tasks with strengthen those, strengthen those foundational skills affecting all of our content area degrees, and writing tasks that are utilized to provide data for form writing. So that really concludes the, the NJSLA part of the assessment, but what's new and what I wanted to mention briefly is that the New Jersey Department of Ed has changed the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment and the way that we're doing it for this school year. So this is a recent information that has come to school districts, and everybody is, there's not a ton of information. there's not a ton of information out right now, but what I want to make sure people are aware is this test will be different. It will be adaptive. It is no longer going to be what we're used to for the last 20 years in New Jersey, where it is like the high stakes and you take the test at the level that it is. And yet it's going to be adaptive, meaning that the questions are going to vary based on how students respond. So we don't really know what that's going to look like yet. There's some limited information available. But the state is up, is starting field test, which is going to take place within the next month, between the end of October and the early November. Everybody in the state is taking it in grades four through 11, and any 12th grader who took Algebra One, Geometry, or Algebra Two last year will participate in this. We'll be sending information out to families in the next two weeks about what the dates and times for those assessments will be.
Questions?
So just one thing to point out, I think from all of this, about two years ago, I, we were really concerned about recovering from COVID. And like, this was our underlying benchmark of how we're doing. Now, if you go back and you look at where the Algebra One things are, 44% compared to a district average of 0.9%. I, I would say we have done a fantastic job at making that recovery something that is no longer really a concern for us in those areas. And so like, I really want to take the time to make sure that we realize how much effort all of the teachers have put into recovering from that and rebuild. Those were people who are Algebra Now in eighth grade, and they were fifth, sixth graders in the middle of COVID, and they have managed to recover from that during some of the most critical time from that. And that is actually driving us to have more people in Algebra One than before.
Yes, greater, the greatest numbers, and we've been seeing that.
So like, we should really take, we should really be on top of that and thinking ourselves to the work that the district is putting in.
I agree.
Great point. And I think a lot, many districts like Wayne and obviously the highlights right there, took advantage of COVID money and funds that came afterwards to put towards after-school programs, tutoring, and so forth, to make that recovery post-pandemic, which was obviously the, the, I guess, the greatest plight of our time and really something that most educational leaders hated. I don't even like saying the word anymore, so. But great job by Wayne and his educators to make this recovery.
Thank you, Lorna.
That concludes the superintendent's report for the evening.
At this time, we're open to the meeting to the public for agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state your name, address, and subject matter. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or in subsequent meeting under all business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Batshu, Mr. Trudan. Anyone from the public on an agenda item?
Good afternoon or evening. My name is Victoria Armist. I live in Wayne. It's 135 Farmingdale Road. My agenda here today is with Proudness. We have a school resource officer.
Ma'am, you're going to have to wait for the next session, next public.
Okay, next public.
This is just for items that are on the agenda tonight.
Okay, wasn't sure. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. I bid you adieu.
No problem. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Seeing no one, move to closing.
Do I have a mover for the agenda? Mrs. Lemandry, Mrs. Regaloso, any comments in this session? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alagun?
Yeah, yes.
You're still here.
Lemandry? Trudano?
Yes.
Prescos?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Regaloso?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavitt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This portion of the meeting is now open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their names, address, and subject matter.
Can I introduce myself again?
Hang on, hang on, I gotta read the statement.
Okay.
I gotta be in compliance with the law. Comments made may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under all business. So I have a mover.
Move.
Trudano, Mr. Batshu. You're up.
It's gonna be five minutes now, should we suck a break? Anyhow, I'm kidding. Again, my name is Victoria Armist. I live at 135 Farmingdale Road. I've been a Wayne resident for the past eight years. I have two lovely children that have gone to Proudness and one that is still currently going to Proudness, which I cannot say better things about. We love Proudness. I have some of our lovely friends and people that we've met here as well. But the reason I'm here is because of our classroom, our school resource officer. His name is Officer Pablo Mandalvo, I believe his last name is. We loved him. And unfortunately, I say ED with that because he resigned. And he resigned on circumstances of rumors, rumors that I don't need to repeat because I don't know the truth of those rumors. There's always three sides of a story, isn't there? Unfortunately, it has to deal with something that's stemming from the PD and Human Resources. And it's a shame because everyone loved this man. He knew all of our children's names, children who didn't even go there yet, such as my daughter. He knew my in-laws' names. He knew my, my parents' names. He high-fived every child, gave them hugs, loved them unconditionally. And he resigned over pettiness. And that pettiness is because he was losing somebody very close to him, and he was denied a day off, and the way that it was done was official misconduct. Now, this official misconduct has nothing to do really with the Board of Education. I understand that. He's employed with the Wayne Police Department. I've dealt with my shares with police officers. I am one of them. I do know SROs, and I cannot compare my SROs to that man. That man was a legend. And I'm sure you working in Jersey City, sir, because I did vote for you, you have some great SROs, I'm sure, in Jersey City as well. But this man, he was creme de la creme. And it is so sad that he is gone, and we have a rotation of police officers coming every day to guard those doors. And unfortunately, when we're guarding those doors, they're not the same as this man. They will not, they will do their job. They will. That's what they're getting paid for, plus time and a half or whatever it is that they're getting paid. But it's just, it's sad. It's sad that the way that it was taken, whatever happens between closed doors, is it's sad because it shows you the, the pride motto that Wayne PD had was not for this gentleman. Because that pride department, what is it, professional, professionalism, respect, integrity, determination, and I forgot what the E was. Wrote it down, forgot what it was. Sorry, I was excited to get up here, guys. Excited. But like, that, that, that's the stuff. That's the stuff that really, it hurts us to the core. So I don't know what we can do. I don't know if there's anything you guys can do. I see you shaking your head.
Yeah.
It's not the same without him.
See? Yeah, it's not the same. Not the same.
Everyone felt safe.
Everyone felt safe, staff, faculty, kids, we all did. So I don't know. I don't know what we can do.
We, 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 we're not going to respond now. We can respond at the end.
Sure, sure. I appreciate it.
I will respond.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Pav, I apologize. It's my first name. All right. Thank you very much.
You did great. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, move closer.
Favor, thanks, through Paul. Any old business? New business?
Just one thing in lieu of what the young lady said. We have a shared service committee, and perhaps we should have a conversation. Just at the very least, have a talk and say WTF. Because you have a group of people who can spend their time coming out here, spend their energy over a gentleman working under our contract, and not ours, but it is our contract. It's a much storied contract we have had. And if you want to know the whole details, you can go back and read all the back and courts on over the last few months. But we may have to have a sit-down chat or like, make a suggestion that the shared service committee have a chat with the, with the people over there. Don't know if we can do anything, or at least have the obligation to have a conversation.
Can I second that?
It's just a suggestion. It's, I have just no procedure to it, just I think we should do that.
We should definitely do something.
We can't, we can't talk about personnel, nor will they. I can't legally do it. Anyone else?
Can I just mention that on November 15th, Unified Sports will be having a turkey trot? And that if you can, it's called Catch Me If You Cran. Catch me if you can. Please support the Unified Sports. It's such a great organization. The moms are wonderful. The kids are great. It's a nice day to spend at Wayne Hills High School on November 15th. It starts at nine. There's going to be the cheerleaders and the football players and the band and donuts. So please come and support Unified Sports. That's all that.
I just add that when looking for information about turkey trot, you can find it on our newsletter that'll come out tomorrow.
Perfect.
Jen Nemitz, who works here in our building, does a great job with that. She does informational services, but she also handles our website and our social media. We're such enthusiasts too, right? She does it, she can't wait to get stuff done. She can't do it without the input from our educators and the schools sharing the information, photos. So keep those contributions coming. But she loves to push the light on Wayne and show him why we're way better. And we're going to keep on giving her the opportunity to do so. But look for the newsletter tomorrow, the weekly newsletter, and it'll, it'll be a link to take part in the turkey trot there. I heard there's rumors it might be frozen turkeys as prices.
Oh, awesome.
Just one thing to add to that as well. They welcome fancy dress.
Do I welcome fancy dress?
They do. The turkey trot will.
Oh, I'm sure. Some people got dressed as turkeys last year, turkey hats and everything else. So yeah, yeah.
We won last year. See if we win again this year.
The best turkeys always have dressing.
I just wanted to.
I just wanted to mention Helena Kim. I thought it was wonderful that she came tonight and did the, the Tech Girl presentation. I think it speaks volumes about the education she's received going back into middle school and how that impacted her, her ambition to pursue her career and her, you know, her enthusiasm to reach other people in different places.
Hello, it was.
Yeah, just beautiful. It's a beautiful story, and I love it. It really speaks volumes about Wayne education.
It does. And you know, you see that, you know, when you're struggling sometimes as a teacher and you have reached those tough days, you think how bad, how much your, your, your expansion of your impact is. And what she's going to do in her lifetime with so much promise and how many young people she's going to impact, it's endless the impact of an educator.
Yeah, and she's one. Think of all the teachers and who they reach and how they reach them and being creative and very impressive, and I'm grateful.
We also have a new staff member introduced today.
We do?
We do. For those who, who worked in the district for a while, we have the excellent financial services of Ginny DiMarco, who was an assistant BA. Now she's coming back as our full-time BA. We're happy to have you. Join the team. We have a great team forming here. We're happy to have you part in.
Just to close out, I know that the superintendent did reach out to the town when we heard Pablo was not going to be here anymore. I think the day we heard, he was on the phone with the chief of police that day and had a conversation with him. And unfortunately, all they can tell, all they would tell us is he's not employed anymore with us. Legally, they can't tell us why, because he's not our employee, he's their employee. Like, we could not tell you why a teacher is no longer an employee here. So I do understand that. Unfortunately, we have a contract with them, and while I don't think it's the best, it puts them in the driver's seat for all these decisions. And unfortunately, our hands are tied with that. Next year, when we even negotiate it, hopefully we can get a little better place where at least we have a say in what goes on. So unfortunately, I don't, my answer is no answer to you. I'm not punching the ball somewhere, but unfortunately, we don't have, you know, other than conversation and we'll look at putting, see if they'll have a shared services meeting with us concerning it. And I can tell you that Mr. Sedidino reached out immediately when we heard. Pablo's a great guy. I mean, I, I was there a number of times, create conversations with him. He, he was exactly as you said. He was the model you wanted as an SRO. All right? And he's better than that. So I wish I could tell you more, but we will continue to investigate it and, you know, see, we'll have conversations with the town. Other than that, motion to adjourn?
Motion?